Hello, everybody. Welcome. It's now being five o'clock. I'll call the meeting of council to order. I'd like to remind everyone that we're on Treaty Six land, the home of the Maytee, and I would ask everyone to rise and the city clerk to say a prayer.
Oh, God, let us each in our own way ask your wisdom and guidance in our deliberations. Help us to incorporate into all our decisions those values which will enable us to fulfill our mission to act as responsible stewards and to respect and value the cultural and spiritual tradition of all citizens of the city of Prince Albert. For this, we pray, amen.
Thank you. This is gonna be hard. Okay, number three, approval of the agenda, and there's no changes. Council Kilmer.
I'll move that the agenda for this meeting be approved, it's presented, and the presentations, delegations, and speakers listed on the agenda be heard when called forward by the mayor.
Thank you. Seconder? Oh, I didn't chalk. Counselor Brodick.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I'll prompt the question. The question's now open and carried. Thank you. Number four, presentations, we have none. Number five is conflict of interest, and you know how that works. If you have a conflict of interest, you have to declare it and then let the clerk know and then remove yourself when the discussion item comes up. Number six, adoption of the minutes. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne, that the minutes of the council, regular council meeting held November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two be taken, read, and adopted.
Thank you. A seconder, please? Thank you, Counsel Cody. Okay, I'll prompt the question. The question is now open and carried. Thank you. Number seven, notice of proclamations, I had none in the last two weeks. Number eight, public hearings, we have none. Number nine, delegations, we have none. Number ten, communications, we have one. Ten point one, water supply agreement. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you. I'll move that the correspondence be received and referred to the mayor's office.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Cody.
Yes, I'll second that.
Thank you.
And I just have a comment to make. I noted the letter that was received from from Ken Danger, and he's amenable to having a meeting.
Yes.
And I'm wondering, have you contacted him or has there been contact made with regards to meeting? And who may be invited to the meeting? I just was interested in knowing who might be involved in the meeting.
In the meeting will be the management committee, then some, a couple of people from the finance and the director of public works. And just, you know, yeah, and we've decided just to wait till after Christmas. So first in the new year, but we have exchanged some information because the information that they were going by about our capacity and stuff like that was twelve Euros old information. They didn't have the current one and our capability, so they're rethinking our position, so they wrote the letter, and we're gonna meet with them. Okay? Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll prompt the question. Questions now open and carried. Thank you. Report administrations and committees. Eleven point one, snow and ice control policy. Counsel Kilmer.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to move that the snow and ice control policy be approved, and after a seconder, I wouldn't mind.
Thank you. Just leave your light on then. Seconder? Counsel Edwards?
Second, Your Worship.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counsel Kilmer.
I just wanted to say that this has been in the works since, I think, March, and very good work done by Public Works and taking a look at the the current policy and refining it and continually refining it and coming back with us. I do appreciate the work and also understand that we'll continue to have more work on it, I'm sure. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Counsel Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne. It was brought to my attention by Saint Michael's School that they're not even on the list and would like to be on the list for priority two. They got missed. They didn't get missed grading or anything, but they are not on the list. Also, I had a few phone calls about residents who have wheelchairs, and they were told when they were phoned, the public works department, that they no longer, with the new current policy, do out the driveways, and so when a bus pulls up, the wheelchair ramp has to hit a certain point in their driveway, otherwise it doesn't go all the way down and they can't get out of the wheelchair bus. And so I got that communicated to me from some folks on MacArthur Drive and Sixteenth Street and on Johnson Crescent. And I was thinking also for the big apartments, you know, on Twenty-Eighth Street and stuff like that, when there's a big snowfall, maybe we can, somebody can go out there and put a letter of when they are going to be grading that street. I know it's a priority one, but just so a communication goes out to them kind of directly on the door of the apartment blocks, just an idea. Thank you.
Oh, to get their cars off the street. Okay, the driveway one, report a problem and they'll come back because we do have a chaseload that comes to the driveways, but we don't go back and like doos their sidewalks and stuff like that. They were doing it before without anyone's knowledge, and that was breach of our policy. So that's why we had to stop because we have fourteen thousand homes, and we just could not keep up with the requests. So unfortunately. Counsel Zep.
Thank you. This might be a question to the mover, Counsel Kilmer. I wonder if we should be adding Saint Michael's School to the motion so that the the policy will reflect the, what, I'm sure it was just an accidental miss, I presume.
Yeah, we all wrote it down, but if you want it on there. Okay, just add, add Saint Michael's List to the priority. What would they be? Charlene two? Schools? Two? Well, she does that. I'll go to Counsel Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne. I did have some concerns. There was one part in the report that talked about driveways again, and I know some of the driveways haven't been totally cleared. There's, you know, whether it's two feet into the driveway on some of the larger, wider driveways. I'm just wondering if there's a, if we have a policy somewhere that, you know, if it's a wide driveway, we don't cover it all or... Because the resident did, did communicate back to Public Works and was told that we wouldn't, we wouldn't clean that the rest of the driveway, and it is sticking into the driveway, but they still have lots of room. That being said, I'm just wondering if there is a policy that says if there's enough room to bring your vehicles in, we don't clear it.
Director of Public Works.
Thank you for that question. So we do clear the driveways, and it is our policy to go back if there's more than six inches
Right.
of snow as a ridge that's left. I know personally, on my driveway, double driveway, on one occasion, they had so much snow in the wing that when they lifted, of course, I lost about two feet of the width of my driveway. They didn't come back to get that even for me. But it's not, it's not that it's not that they purposely do that.
No.
It could happen on occasion, especially in our last snowfall, we had quite a few substitute operators because of the flu season, so we had a lot of changeover in for temporary, and it's potential that some of the operators maybe misjudged the width of that driveway.
Yeah, and I understand mistakes happen or they didn't quite cover it, but my concern was when they phoned back, they said, "No, we wouldn't come back." So I understand there was lots of room in the driveway still, and I wondered if there was a policy.
No, it would be, it would be more to the discretion of the manager, so those kind of calls, we put those to the manager as a service request. He would go out and look at it, and if he judged it being cleared enough, he wouldn't send a loader back. If he judged it that they needed to come back, then they would come back.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, and just to explain a little more, this year was the first year that I actually got half my driveway gone. But the problem is, if you go by me, my house, we have a four-car garage driveway, enough for one car to park a driveway. My little grass area than my driveway. And I was amazed the amount that he was pulling that he didn't leave more. But then the loader did come and scooped it, but when it scooped it this way, it left a little here, which was fine because I could still get in my driveway. So it is a, it is a challenge. Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship. Just a couple of comments on this policy. I know we've been discussing it for quite some time. We had a lot of discussion within this room, and we've had some discussion within the residents within our wards. You know, it's not perfect, but it's something that we at least have ability to operate on, and we're gonna continue to get those service requests. We're gonna continue to get to report a concern, so I would encourage residents to, to contact their counselors and/or, and/or our website to do that. And definitely happy we finally got to this point here, so I will be supporting this motion and its policy with, with a little bit of apprehension because I know it's, it's still not gonna address some of the concerns that we're hearing from residents, but it's something that we can utilize as a, as a moving forward, I guess, so.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna see no one else in the queue. I'm gonna prompt the question. Questions now open and carried. Thank you. Eleven point two, water treatment plant. Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship.
Till I think about the queue.
I'm gonna go ahead and move this motion that the the portion of the tender number forty-two of two thousand twenty-two for the supply and delivery of polyaluminum chloride for the two thousand twenty-three water purification materials be awarded to Clear Water Equipment and Technologies in the amount of five hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred dollars plus five percent GST for a total of six hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy. That the portion of the tender numbered forty-two of two thousand twenty-two for the supply and delivery of powder activated carbon for the two thousand twenty-three water purification materials be awarded to Clear Tech Industries, Inc. in the amount of ninety-seven thousand two hundred and forty dollars plus five percent GST for a total of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and two thousand and a hundred and two dollars. Three, that the portion of tender number forty-two of two thousand twenty-two for the supply and delivery of potassium perm-
That's good enough.
Yeah, for the two thousand twenty-three water purification materials be awarded to Brentag Canada, Inc. in the amount of ninety-three thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars plus five percent GST for a total of ninety-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-one. Four, that the tender amount over the two thousand twenty-three approved budget allocations for water purification materials in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand six, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars be funded from the utility improvement fund. And five, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute any applicable documents on behalf of the city if required.
Thank you. Seconder?
Second.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue. So I'll prompt the question. Questions now open and carried. Thank you. Eleven point three, lease agreement, Prince Albert Golf and Curling Club. We all looked at you. Counsel Cody.
Okay.
That's because you have a golf ball on your Christmas tie.
Yeah. I move that the lease agreement between the city and Prince Albert Golf and Curling Club be approved in the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for a one-year term from January first to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. I wanna say that that's a good deal for the city.
Thank you. Counsel Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dionne. I'll second, I'll second the motion, and also, is it a club or is it a center? Or have we changed that, or are we going to change that?
This is their incorporated name, but they do advertise it as a center.
Oh, I see.
But this is their legal incorporated name, but their trading now is the center.
So they will be changing it to
The center.
Center later on, or?
It's in the process.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other things? I don't see anyone in the queue. Questions now open and carried. Eleven point four, animal control service agreement extension. Take care of the dogs.
Thank you.
Counsel Head.
Thank you, Worship. I'll move that the current animal control service agreement between the city and the Prince Albert SPCA be extended for further three years until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, on the same terms and conditions for the provision of contract services for bylaw animal control, that the fee for service be eighty-one thousand six hundred dollars per annum, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute any applicable documents on behalf of the city if required.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Edwards?
Seconded.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the queue. So I'll prompt the question. Questions now open and carried. Eleven point five, Prida Moving Forward. Counsel Zurkowski.
Thank you, Worship. I will move the first three recommendations, and then
There's more?
There's more, I believe. There's four. And I'll tell you why, I guess, if I can get a seconder, and then we can go from there if you like.
Yeah, it's caught me off guard. Go ahead.
That the proposed PA Regional Economic Development Alliance model be approved, that administration work with the city selected to develop a transitional plan for proposal that would retire the city's legal obligations under the current PA Rida agreement, and that would protect the city's financial interests in the transition. And three, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute an amending agreement on behalf of the city.
Then choose number four. He's not moving, and you're not moving number four.
Not at this time. I think I'd like to sort of chat about a few things, and then we'll see where we end up. But not at this time.
Okay. Counsel Miller.
I'll second, Mayor Dionne.
Okay, I'd like you to explain it because I'm not prepared to support it without number four because we've been waiting for that position for some time, so.
I think when I saw number four, there, I think what my thoughts were, and we learn from history, right? It's always about next time. Well, I think in this example, it is next time, and I think there's a lot of value if the elected and senior administration get together and talk about the expectations of that position. I think it's really important. It's, it's needed for this city. Absolutely, we need a champion in this city. But I think in order to avoid any pitfalls or roadblocks in the coming months and years, I think we need to manage expectations and have an open and honest discussion about what administration sees that role as being and what a council sees that role as being, and what their goals and objectives are. So I'm not opposed to moving forward in that position, but I think the word immediately caught me a little bit off guard, and I think insofar as getting some of those wins that we're talking about and filling some of those gaps that we have, I think it's important that we have a conversation first so that we all understand, so that nobody is disappointed in the expectations moving forward.
Okay, and I don't mind supporting it if you would say that number four comes back to us at the first council meeting in January, because I don't wanna delay too long, so that gets us past the holidays, and then we've got an executive meeting and a council meeting, so.
That sounds perfect. I think that's manageable.
Can you put up there that number four, number three, I guess, sorry, or number four be tabled to the first council meeting?
Be postponed until the, yeah.
Yeah.
Next executive.
In January. Yeah.
And then I'm sure by then we can have a managed conversation about that item and the expectations. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Zep.
Question for administration, maybe it's for the director of planning, I'm not sure, but I guess I was just curious if there are any roadblocks or issues of, of waiting to that first executive meeting.
Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counsel, except for the question. I can certainly appreciate the, the approach that Counsel Zurkowski is referencing. You know, economic development manager is a position that's existed, and then obviously we went in a different direction with, with PA Rida. So again, I can appreciate the discussion and counsel's interest to manage those expectations and talk a little bit about what the responsibilities of that role will be. In the interim, I will continue to do my best with the larger economic development projects we've got underway. With Prida, and it's, it's referenced in the, in the document, we have to come up with a bit of a transition plan when it comes to tourism and those types of things, but with the first executive, executive meeting of, of two thousand twenty-three, I think we are able to manage that. So I think we'll be okay.
And question for the mover. Is the intention then that we have those discussions but expectations at the executive meeting listed? Is that the thought?
I think I'd leave that up to the folks that manage our agenda. It's, it's my expectation that those, I don't wanna get caught in the weeds on this conversation. I think the big picture stuff is important, that as much as we can be, we're on the same page when it comes to economic development in the city and how that's managed. And we haven't had that conversation. We haven't had this position field in a long time. So whether it's on this week of January or that week of January, to me, that small picture stuff, it doesn't matter to me. I think as long as it happens, and if we can have that conversation before or at that executive meeting, I leave it up to the people that, that bring the information to the agenda.
You can always come back if it comes to you. Counsel Miller.
Thank you, and I also agree with number four. And I believe a plan in place for the position and managing what they do is a significant role in our city because, you know, they, it is an important part, and we are gonna go forward with economic development and in a hard, good way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see nobody else in the queue, so I'll prompt the question. Questions now open and it carried. Okay, eleven point five, digital billboard. Counsel Head.
Thank you. I'll move that the sign permit application for a digital billboard to be located at four ninety-six Marcus Road, East B, tonight.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Zep.
I'll second.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just to, maybe if I could just confirm and ask the director. My understanding from reading this report is it's in a- reading this report is it's an issue of the, just that the requirements are not met at this time, and am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counsel Lennick, for the question. Essentially, what we require is a seven-and-a-half-meter setback from the property line. The applicant is familiar with our bylaw on that regulation, and they are aware of that requirement. So they've chosen to move ahead with the application, and they wish to attend an appeal board here to try to get that waived. So yes, that is entirely what the, I guess the infraction is, is that seven-and-a-half-meter setback.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll prompt the question. Questions now open. Anne Carried. Thank you. Eleven point seven, municipal revenue sharing. Counselors up.
That the city meets the following eligibility requirements to receive the municipal revenue sharing grant: submission of the two thousand and twenty-one audited financial statements to the Ministry of Government Relations, submission of the two thousand and twenty-one public reporting on municipal waterworks to the Ministry of Government Relations, in good standing with respect to the reporting and remittance of education property taxes, adoption of procedure bylaw number twenty-three of two thousand and twenty-one, adoption of various employee policies to represent the employee code of conduct, all members of council have filed their public disclosure statements as required, and that the city clerk be authorized to execute the declaration of eligibility and submit it to the Ministry of Government Relations.
Counselor Miller?
Thanks, Mayor Dionne. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead. Counselor Edwards.
Thanks, your worship. Does this happen yearly?
Yes.
Yeah, so we send our audited financial statements in every year?
Yes.
And have they ever come back and said, you know, there's some concerns here?
No, but we've got lots of compliments on the quality of the work.
On the quality of our audited financial statements?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So they're pleased with our audit. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No one in the queue? Questions now open. Anne Carried. Thank you. Eleven point eight, two thousand and twenty-three general fund operating and capital budget. Counselor Cody?
Yeah, I will move this particular item. And number one, that two thousand and twenty-three general fund budget be approved. And number two, that forty-five million nine hundred and fifty thousand three hundred and sixty dollars of revenue necessary to balance the general fund operating budget be raised from municipal taxation. And three, that two thousand and twenty-three general fund capital budget in the amount of six million six hundred and ninety-two thousand forty dollars, including principal payments on loans of two hundred and sixty-three thousand forty in police capital be approved. And four, that the two thousand and twenty-three transfer of four million nine hundred and ten thousand dollars from the general fund operating to the general fund capital be approved. And that five, that the two thousand and twenty-three fleet budget in the amount of six million one hundred and sixty-four dollars, sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars, including two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in police service requirements be approved. And that six, that the two thousand and twenty-three Prince Albert Police Service be funded in the amount of eighteen million three hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars inclusive of capital expenditures of two hundred and sixty-three thousand forty dollars, and that the police base tax in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. Seven, that the city accept a two hundred thousand dollar transfer from the Police Services Operating Reserve to the city's general fund to assist with budget shortfalls. And number eight, that the two thousand and twenty-three reserve allocations of three million eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars of the principal payments on loans of two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred dollars be approved for a total of four million one hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Number nine, that the following staffing changes be approved. A, that the staffing complement for the information technology functional area increase to include one permanent infrastructure systems analyst position. And B, that the staffing complement for firefighters increase to include three permanent firefighters. And C, that the staffing complement of the Public Works Department increase to include one permanent foreman, two position, and one permanent truck driver equipment operator position. Number ten, that the annual sponsorship funding for Cook Municipal Golf Course be allocated to the Golf Course Improvement Reserve. Number eleven, that the motions from the two thousand and twenty-three General Fund Budget Committee deliberations be ratified, and that administration proceed as authorized. And twelve, that the approved two thousand and twenty-three general fund budgeted expenditures be approved for dis- for distribution or dispersment effective January first, two thousand and twenty-three. And that is the works.
No, we didn't turn the recorder on, so you have to do it again. No. No, we did. Counselor Ed.
Thank you, your worship. I'll second that motion.
Thank you. You have your light on, Counsel Cody. You have a comment?
Yeah, I just thought I'd say a few words about the budget and the budget process, and I think it was a very worthwhile operation. First of all, I think we have to thank some of the administration, if not all of the administration, and certainly all of our staff, for the job they did. Want to thank Ramona and her staff. She's got a great team of individuals who did absolute yeoman service for us and did the kinds of things that we asked them to do, which was tough to do. It was tough to do. It wasn't an easy job for them. And all of the administration, they worked hard at this thing. They worked hard trying to tell us what they needed, and they had some good asks. But you know, at the end of the day, we had some tough decisions to make, too. And let me address those in a minute. I want to thank the city manager. You know, coming into the city manager and then immediately having to take on the job of infra- or for restructuring the tourist soul departments is not an easy job. And she did that, she did that without any fanfare and fuss, not only that, but not to upheave people in our corporation, but to make it more efficient and more effective. And that's exactly what it's done. You can go now to areas of this corporation, and people are happier, they're pleased with their jobs, and they're kind to the public. And that's what us counselors need, is people that are kind to the public. That's our boss. And it goes well to say what the job she's done. She also did some renovations at practically no cost, at practically no cost. Because, let's face it, all those things were done with efficiencies, efficiencies. And to think that a person comes in as a new city manager and would take a nice big office and cut it in half because she says she didn't need it that big to give it to another person tells you the quality of people we've got in this corporation. So I say thank you to all of you, but also thank you to the city counselors. The city counselors did a great job. We sat here for a couple of days and worked hard, argued a bit, and, but did at the end of the day come down to what today I think the public is looking for. The public asked us to do things. They asked us to be better in our technology. We answered the question by giving them a staff person. They asked us, you aren't doing as good a job as you should in Public Works. What did we do? We answered their question. We give them two people. We also know that for thirty years, we haven't had an increase in the fire department's allotment of people. We answered that question. That goes to tell you what kind of a council this is. We have compassion, very much compassion. We compliment our people. We help them as best we can, and I think it shows here. I think we've got a great budget. Naturally, we've got a little tax increase, which we, none of us like, but I'll tell you what, we had some hurdles to go through. We had some hurdles to go through. We didn't, we didn't put on two raises of electrical surcharges or electrical increases. That was the government of Saskatchewan. We didn't put on twenty-three percent on energy. That was the government of Saskatchewan. We didn't put on the PST on everything that's possible. That was the government of Saskatchewan. So this budget here at five percent, or four point five, or four point eight, whatever it's going to be, whenever we use the tax tools, I think we've got to tell the public, this budget here is not necessarily because we wanted it that way, it's because we were forced to do that. We were forced into it because we had some hurdles to overcome. Are we here to not help as well in Saskatchewan? Of course we are. And we did. We didn't balk at it. We didn't say we're going to cut and slash and hack. We just simply said we're going to have to live with it, and we're going to ask our taxpayers to help us too, so. I think we've got a great budget, and we did it with great people. We did it with a great council. And Mayor, thank you very much for your leadership. And I just ask all of you, please, vote for this budget. It's worth your time. It's worthwhile, and we're doing it on behalf of the taxpayers of this city, who are our boss and who do a good job for us as well as we do for them.
Thank you. Counselor Zep?
There are some really, really important spending items in this general fund budget. I acknowledge that, and they are important to our citizens. I do believe that I will be voting no on this budget, and for two major reasons that I would like to articulate. The first is regarding our Central Avenue downtown street scape revitalization project. We have in the past spent forty-five thousand dollars on the architect work, and to have that plan created, we had the public consultation done by the third party, and then we now have that document on a shelf. And we see at budget time that it was not recommended to be done in this year. I am hopeful that we will see that in future years come on to our desks. The, as the report states, many of the pipes under the ground are over a hundred and ten years old, and that the work does need to be done at some point. The report also states that our downtown sidewalks are crumbling and create tripping hazards, and that we, the intention is to deal with that when we take out those underground pipes and replenish and make a really fresh and beautiful downtown. Secondly, I'd like to reiterate that I did vote against the increased, paying the increased cost that's proposed for the Aquatic and Arenas Recreation Center with the total project budget, which started at sixty million to now approximately one hundred and thirteen point eight million dollars. I also opposed the issue of paying two point five million dollars in annual loan payments. I'm very concerned that in this budget, we are paying, using the entirety of our civic facilities levy to pay that loan. And so those are my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Biden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this budget. Is it perfect? Absolutely no. It's not perfect. I don't know if there ever is a perfect budget. But what I like about this budget is some of the things that we promised and achieved, as Counsel Cody mentioned, you know, adding three firefighting positions, adding two positions to Public Works, which will help with snow removal, et cetera. I'm also very proud to support all of the work and all of the funding in community services. Those are the buildings that so many people use in our city. And the goal of this council was to make them as affordable as possible with some cost recovery, and I think it's sixty-four percent, somewhere around there, fifty-six percent cost recovery. And overall, some of them are better than others. You know, the art center, I mean, that costs us money. But again, it's a, it's a center that provides so many activities and opportunities for young artists, for people that are financially struggling, to have some sort of entertainment, recreation, those kinds of activities at a reasonable rate. So I'm very proud of that. The other thing I'm very proud of is the fact that we continue, as a council, to support our external agencies. The external agencies are things like the Historical Society and other agencies in town, the Man Gallery, et cetera. Those are, those are very important agencies that offer all kinds of programs for people in Prince Albert. And they run them through volunteer work. If it wasn't for those external agencies, we wouldn't be able to have many of these kinds of facilities in our community, because people give of themselves and volunteer, and those agencies are able to get people to volunteer and to show their appreciation. They offer all sorts of incentives, et cetera. So I'm very proud of that. So overall, I think this is a good budget. As Counsel Cody said, we faced some surprises of costs. As a resident, you know, in my house, I know the costs that have gone up in my utilities, in particular SAS Power, SAS Energy. Those are increasing significantly. And so if you think about your house, think about heating and running electricity in the Art House, et cetera. Those costs have gone up as well. And that is where we're seeing an increase. So we will see an increase in this, in this budget or into the taxpayers, a tax increase. And as Counsel Cody pointed out, those are the obstacles that we faced, and that's a result of some of the costs that people are going to see as a tax increase. But overall, I think it's a good budget. It's give and take. Nobody, nobody in this room got their way.
No one.
One hundred percent. And that's what it means working in a council, and that's what I like about this group of people that we're working with. There's a lot of give and take. There's a lot of disagreements. And, but at the end, we can walk out of here and still shake hands and have chats about our points of view. And that's what's nice about working with this group of people, and hopefully having this budget pass as a collective. So thank you, and thank you to the men, and thank you to everybody that worked so hard in preparing our papers for us so that we could deliberate and spend those long, long days together, which was rewarding. So thank you.
Counselor Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Dionne. Yeah, we did spend a couple of days together, and they were hardcore days. We started out at five and a half percent, which was quite shocking, but not our fault, I suppose. Those increases came from the government, and we have to pay for them. And also, I, too, was a little disappointed in the Central Avenue not getting, you know, brought up, and it's in the non-funded. And, you know, our downtown needs a little bit of uplift, so maybe next year we can also do that. Another thing that I was never in favor was the extra money given to the Twin Pads and the Aquatic Center. And also, I guess, you know, on the horizon, we have a hospital being extended, and we didn't discuss anything to put aside for that. And it is coming, but probably in a couple of years. But I think that we could have talked about, you know, start saving now for the future, because we are eventually going to be furnishing the hospital with furnishings, and, because that is our responsibility municipally. You can say no if you want, but apparently that's not the truth. But that's what I've been told. So I won't be supporting the budget for those three reasons. Thank you.
Counselor Ed?
Thank you, your worship. No, I thought I should comment, and thank you for, fellow counselors, on providing some of their feedback as well. I will be supporting this motion because of all the work that went into it to get to this point. Yes, we sat in this day, this room for many days. I won't say it's grueling, but definitely tedious to go through some of those line items, which we had asked for, and it made it very much, made it very easier, easy to go through the budget, at least identifying where those costs are going to and what they're going to be spent on. I think where the part comes in is the management side of that budget now. One thing, we set the dollar amount, but how are we now going to spend that dollar amount? And that's where that, you know, we have to pay attention to as well. But overall, I want to say and kind of echo some of the comments of Counsel Cody. Well done to administration, putting that work together, to all our staff, to the people done to administration, putting that work together, to all our staff, to the people in this room, and of course, the feedback we get from our residents. So it does come with a little bit of an increase, but, you know, it is, you know, accepted, I think, from the people I've talked to, that is the case that we're going to have to move forward. We have a lot of things that we weren't able to do, of course, but I suspect some of those things will be addressed on the next budget. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. I'm going to support the budget. It was a very difficult three days. As Counselor Head noted, line by line, we went through every item, we discussed it all, we voted on many, and we came to a conclusion. Part of the line by line, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, but was to improve and fix sidewalks in front of two seniors' complexes. That was part of our budget, was to add money that wasn't there to fix two sidewalks in front of seniors' homes, to keep them safe. So part of supporting this budget supports those line items and supports our seniors. There's lots of money that goes into our seniors in this budget, lots of money that goes into our kids, because guess what? Kids need to be active. We have to subsidize our pools, which we don't own a pool right now, but we are paying for a pool that we don't own. Why are we paying it? Because kids need swimming lessons. Some of us around the table supported another pool a while ago, the Marion Aquatics. It was okay to put in, I think, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars into a pool that we didn't own, but it's not okay to put money towards building a new pool and new twin pads, because our current pool isn't number one owned by us, and it's fifty years old. So if we don't replace those right now, we won't have swimming lessons for our kids, for our little toddlers, we won't. So planning for the future, this is planning for the future. If we don't do it now, it'll close, and we'll have the Kinsman Water Park in the summer, but right now, I've heard the community say, listen, we don't have enough spots for swimming lessons. Putting money away and building an infrastructure that can help with that, we're going to have some swimming lessons and extra time in the pool for our seniors. That's what's going to happen. Our seniors are going to be able to do aquacize on a more regular basis, they're going to be able to be active. Currently, we're sending kids down the road to a small community in St. Louis down Highway Two, because we don't have enough ice time in the city. So we're sending young referees, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years old adults, down the road to ref a game twenty miles out of the city down a narrow highway that's dangerous. Well, now we're going to have extra ice time, which we desperately need. Why? Because we've got to keep our kids active. If we don't have active kids in our community, guess where they end up? Generally with me, in the penitentiary, or in custody somewhere, or in court, or in our backyard somewhere. Well, I want them active, and a lot of this budget supports that. Absolutely, we subsidize facilities for a good reason, because if we went to a user pay, people wouldn't play. They wouldn't be healthy at all. User pay, my goodness. Cost of sports in our community is high as it is, and we're a lot lower than a lot of communities out there, because we do, and we are able to subsidize, and you have to, because we need people to be active. And part of this budget, a lot of this budget supports the residents in our city, kids, adults, youth, seniors. Did I like everything that came out of this budget? Nope. We sat here for two and a half days battling line by line, and we came up with a number that we all think is fair, although some, I've heard, want to spend six million dollars, which is Central Avenue rehab, which is another ten percent tax if we went ahead and did it. What also that would do was would cause our Central Avenue businesses to hurt for a while. They're just coming out of COVID, where they lost money, so we want to put them into a different location in order to fix the pipes in the ground that really aren't leaking right now. It's not an absolute emergency that that gets done. Plus, we also have talked in this room that, listen, we'll support Central Avenue once we can manage some of the social issues that are downtown that we're currently working on. That's important. Before Central Avenue, we put a pile of money into infrastructure, that's important, and that's what we're doing right now, and it's part of the budget. I'm also supporting the fact that we are saving for the future, which I heard tonight, you need to save for the future. Three million, eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and seventy reserve allocations. What's that for? Saving for the future. That's part of it, that's part of this budget. So I will support it despite, yes, we are having a tax increase, it's needed, we've already touched base on it, lots of counselors talked about it, so all in all, I don't like all the items, but we come to a conclusion, and we need to support it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close. I just want to thank my parents for the training I had, which helped me. I have five brothers, four sisters. So did I ever get everything I wanted? No. Was I mad? No, because I realized there's other people that are concerned. If we look at this budget, and let's round it off, we'll say there's a hundred items in this budget, and I probably didn't like three or four. So I'm going to kill the other ninety-six because I don't get my way? Like, none of these, we've said, no, we're not going to do. We said, today isn't the day. Today isn't the day. We talked about the Rink Project for ten years, ten years. Central Avenue, we've only talked for three or four that we actually had a plan, you know? And so, and I want to be able to go out in the street and take credit for this budget. I'm not sad about it or going to run from it, there's lots of good things in that budget. And as you know, during the two and a half days of deliberation, I was quite vocal about three or four things I didn't like, but I'm not going to sour grapes and say I'm not voting for the budget because I didn't get my lid away. My parents taught me better than that. They did. It was about sharing and growing up together, and that's what we're doing as a corporation, we're growing, and we're growing up together with our partners. Look at Community Services have grown because we have a great partner for the last ten years. So I'm certainly pleased with the budget, and I'm going to support it.
Point of information.
All right, but I'm going to listen very carefully.
Point of information. My understanding is that we, as a council, began the Central Avenue Downtown Streetscape Revitalization discussion, and then paying for the project to be completed, to be done starting in the year 2017, which I think would be about six years ago now, and of course, discussions predated that as well.
Okay, well, I don't want to go back when I was twenty years old and we were talking about a new ring, so I just leave it the way it is. Thank you, I'll prompt a question. Question is now open. Oop, hang on. Okay, it's now open. It passes seven, two. Right on, thank you for that. And I'll be looking forward to seeing U7 at the opening, because it's going to be an exciting project for us. Eleven point nine, 2023 Land Fund Operations.
So you said, as a council, we make a decision, and when we leave this room, we make a decision together, so we're going out and we're saying that we didn't? Are we going out saying together that we did?
You just publicly voted against it?
Yes or no?
So we can't say that? No. Because you just publicly voted against it, I'm not supporting that. Okay.
Point of order.
Counselor Brodnik was in the queue before you. Counselor Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what's important is whether we vote in favor or against, and what I've seen with this council is when a decision has been made, I've been on the receiving end of like an eight to one vote.
Yes.
This last year, I was very happy that it was a seven to two vote, because Counselor Kilmer, and that's been Marcus Road, which I didn't get. But once a decision is made, I think what I like about this council is that even though we voted against it, we move forward, and we're not going to sit here and bash the budget or create all this anger and hostility, and I think that's what's important. And so, once the Rinks and Aquatic Center gets finished, all nine of us need to be there, because it's council-
They will be there.
-with the community that got this project done. Even though some people voted against certain parts of it and voted against it, we're still in this together as a group, and I think we need to make sure that we continue to do that, and that's what I like about this group, that this is what we are doing.
Yep.
I can't say that about my previous experience, but this group definitely is that way. So I thank my colleagues that voted against, I respect the fact that they voted against for their reasons. We all have to live with our decisions and what we say and do, and that's what's important about a democracy. That's the key of a democracy, is that nobody gets their way one hundred percent, and we should. If you get your way, that's a dictatorship, and we don't want to go that direction. So thank you for the time.
Okay. Yeah.
Previous item has been discussed, everybody had their opportunity, it's been voted on, it's time to move on to the next item.
Okay.
I don't need to speak further.
Thank you, thank you for that, I'll prompt a question. There is no question.
[inaudible]
Oh, okay, just give me a minute here, let me reset. Okay, eleven point nine, 2023 Land Fund Operating and Capital Budget. Counselor Zarikowski.
So I will move that the 2023 Land Fund Operating Budget be approved as follows, and operating revenues of four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, operating expenses of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty, capital and inter-fund transactions of seventy-six thousand, five hundred, and an operating surplus of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty, to fund the capital projects, loan principal payments, and reserve transfers, and that the 2023 Land Fund capital expenditures of zero, and loan principal payments of two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one hundred, be approved. And that the motions from the 2023 Land Fund Budget Committee deliberations be ratified, and that administration proceed as authorized, and City Clerk, that the approved 2023 Land Fund budgeted expenditures be approved for disbursement effective January one, 2023.
Thank you. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Worship, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any comments? Okay, I see no one in the queue. Questions now open. Eleven point ten, 2023 Airport Operating and Capital Budget. Counselor Head.
Thank you, Worship, I'll move that the 2023 Airport Fund Operating Budget be approved as follows, A, operating revenues of one million, ninety-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, B, operating expenses of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred dollars, C, capital inter-fund transfers of four hundred and three thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, and D, a deficit of five hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty. After adjusting for non-cash amortization, there is a surplus of one hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty to fund capital projects and reserve transfers, and two, that the 2023 Airport Fund capital expenditures of eighteen thousand be approved, three, that the motions from the 2023 Airport Fund Budget Committee deliberations be ratified, and that administration proceed as authorized, and four, that the approved 2023 Airport Fund budgeted expenditures be approved for disbursement effective January first, 2023.
Seconder.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue, so I'll prompt the question. Questions now, oop, questions now open, and carried. Eleven point one, 2023 Water Utility Fund Operating and Capital Budget. Counselor Zep.
I proudly move that the 2023 Water Utility Fund Operating Budget be approved as follows, operating revenues of nineteen million, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty, operating expenses of fourteen million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and ten, capital and inter-fund transactions of six million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, sixty, and a deficit of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, twenty dollars. After adjusting for non-cash amortization, the surplus is five million, two hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars to fund capital projects and loan principal payments, that the 2023 Water Utility Fund capital expenditures of three million, eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, and loan principal payments of one million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred be approved, that the motions from the 2023 Water Utility Fund Budget Committee deliberations be ratified, and that administration proceed as authorized, and that the approved 2023 Water Utility Fund budgeted expenditures be approved for disbursement effective January first, 2023.
Thank you. Seconder.
Thank you, I'll second that.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue. I'll move the question. Questions now open, and carried. Thank you. Eleven point one, one, oh, I have no number.
Twelve.
It's cute, twelve. Twenty-three Sanitation Fund Operating and Capital Budget. Counselor Zarikowski.
Take that. That the, with the following motions, that the 2023 Sanitation Fund Operating Budget be approved as follows, operating expenses of five point seven million dollars plus another fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty, operating expenses of four million, nine hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty, capital and inter-fund transfers of one million, three hundred and five thousand, one hundred and ten, and a deficit of five hundred and two thousand, four hundred and eighty, and after adjusting for non-cash amortization, the surplus is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty, in order to fund the capital projects and loan principal payments, and that the 2023 Sanitation Fund capital expenditures of five hundred and forty-four eight hundred thousand be approved, and that the motions from the 2023 Sanitation Fund Budget Committee deliberations be ratified, and that administration proceed as authorized, and that the approved 2023 Sanitation Fund be budgeted expenditures be approved for disbursement effective January one, 2023.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Dion, I'll second.
Thank you. I see no one in the queue, so I'll prompt the question. Motion's now open, and carried. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. Now, before we go to Mayor's forum, I'm going to end, like I did before, with the Christmas greeting, right at the end, we'll go around the table and wish everyone a New Year and that, because this is our last public meeting. Okay, over and above that, anything under Mayor's and Counselors' forum? Okay, over and above that, anything under Mayor's and Counselors' Form? Yes. Yeah, you just, Christmas and the year end at the end. Okay. Counsel Brodnik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let people know that, um, once it's, it's back this year, the, um, Christmas Community Day Meal, um, hosted by various organizations, six or seven organizations in the community, puts us on and it'll be on Christmas Day at St. Mary High School is the site. And, um, you know, in, in previous years, I know we've served, you know, upwards of 3,000 meals that day. So it's for people that are alone, for seniors, um, for, um, uh, people, uh, that just want to come and, and share some fellowship, on Christmas Day. So it's a great, it's a full, full turkey meal, um, and it's, it's really good. And I, in the new year, will, will thank, um, the organizing committee and, and who, what organizations were all involved in that.
Can you tell us the time?
Um, I think it's noon. I think it starts at noon on Christmas Day. Till four, yeah. We, well, we, we don't kick anybody out at four, but it's, it, it goes on and on and on that day. It's, it's a good day. And, and so after a couple of years, uh, with COVID where we couldn't gather, um, it's good to be able to gather once again, to, um, to spend that very important day together and have people of our community be able to do that. Secondly, I want to just mention, um, uh, many of us attended, um, the, um, Christmas banquet, um, hosted by the Prince Albert Historical Society. It was a, uh, interesting welcome, but after that, it was a great evening, um, by all of us. And, uh, and, uh, to just share in some laughs, some fellowship. And I thank, um, Doris Lund for the invitation, the personal invitation that she sent out to all counselors. So, uh, thank you to, to Doris Lund for, for doing that and getting, uh, how many were there? One, two, three, four? Five, five of us out. Uh, and Counsel Cody, uh, sent his regrets. I know he usually goes to those things as well. But he was out of town that day. Um, last but not least, um, once again, call to action number 87. Again, it says, "We call upon all levels of government to provide public education that tells the national story of Aboriginal athletes, um, in history." And today, I want to talk a little bit about, um, a, a lady that lives in Prince Albert. She's Métis. Uh, her name is Colette Bourgagnier. She was, um, a really good athlete, uh, in high school and, um, was in a car crash that paralyzed her. But that did not stop her, um, in pursuing her athletic endeavors. And she went on to university and, and, um, from my research, she was the very first, um, wheelchair, uh, athlete to, uh, achieve a phys ed degree in the College of Education. And so she, she pursued, um, her, her athletic, uh, dream. And she became a Paralympic athlete, winning 10 medals, seven at, um, the Summer Games. And, sorry, seven at the Winter Games and three at the Summer, um, Paralympic Games. In 2010, uh, she was awarded the Wang Yan Dai, um, Honors Award for her efforts in overcoming her adversity and pursuing athletic, um, endeavors. In 2010, she was the Saskatchewan Female Athlete of the Year. And in 2019, she was inducted into the Canada Sports Hall of Fame. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm very proud to, um, to know that this young lady also has encouraged other, um, athletes in our community. One being, um, uh, Brittany Hudak, who went on to, um, represent Prince Albert in the Paralympics. So she's encouraged her and, um, a great role model for, for all, uh, women and men and everybody in our community. And so, um, I'm very proud to have, uh, researched her and found out more about, um, this resident in Prince Albert. And, um, I look forward to, uh, continuing to do this to, uh, recognize, um, indigenous, um, athletes. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Counsel Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor Dion. A couple of items. I did attend a meeting on, I think it was Friday afternoon, just for discussions on homelessness. Was chaired by Jeff Despens of the P A G C. They've really, uh, got some things work, in the works. Over 20 agencies attended, were people from specific agencies. And I just want to say that, I mean, I listened for most of it. I, I, I talked a little bit, but I happened to be in my car on the way to Yorkton and, and just listening to the conversations that are ongoing is really unbelievable. There's, there's a lot of, uh, smart people working on these, um, these concerns. And with over 20 voices in the room of all aspects of our community, it's, uh, it's good. It's, it's good to see the progress that's occurring. I know a location was a key topic for sure. They're, they're certainly trying to find a, a, a location they can call home and, um, and that's going to be important. I think it's part of our motion that's out there right now as well. Uh, Dr. Chad Nielsen did, um, talk as well, gave a presentation. And, um, it was, was, um, there was questions about it, but it was very valid questions and, uh, progress was made, I think. And, um, I was just happy to be there and, um, see the progress that's occurring. And I just wanted to tell people that we do care and we are trying to take care of the people that are on the street right now. And there's lots of agencies working on it and it's very important. On another note, I was able to attend a Christmas function at the Carlton Park Community Club.
Coincidence or?
Yeah. Well, I just want to talk that it was a great community event. It was very positive. Santa Claus attended. Um, he was very loud and boisterous. He was great with the kids. I, I, I thank Santa for coming out. Uh, we had kids crafts set up. It was, we had, the, the rink was open for family skating. It was fire pits set up. And you know what? The community got to, got together and we got to meet some new people. And we got to bring people together like a community should be. And I, and I think that's important and we, we don't do it often enough. And, uh, strangers gathering around each other and getting to know each other is, is what community really is all about. And, and we have a, a great community in Prince Albert here. And that's everything for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Counsel Head?
Thank you, Worship. Uh, and thank you, uh, Counsel Gronnik and, uh, Counsel Edwards for your comments. Uh, both I appreciate. And kind of in the same vein as, as, uh, giving thanks. And I guess I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge, uh, a different group, a group of students and the initiative they took to help the homeless people here in Prince Albert. So happy to hear that we're meeting last Friday. Uh, about a month ago, a little bit more, when Margaret La Rock asked her students in her clothing and textile class how they can give back to our people and to our community. Uh, one student spoke up and said, "I have an uncle who doesn't have anywhere to live and struggles living on the streets of Prince Albert." So from this conversation, they decided to make winter tuques for those in need. Stitch by stitch and class by class, these students began to have meaningful conversations about the homelessness and overall society issues facing indigenous people. The more they talked, the more they realized how important it is to give back and to have empathy for those in need and less fortunate. The day came to now deliver their creations and they drove to downtown Prince Albert. And at the first, and at first a little reluctant, but when the first tuque was handed out, they realized that these are just people who, for whatever reason, are less fortunate.
Yes.
After all, the tuques were handed out and it was time to head home. The students each reflected on the need to always help others and to always have empathy for others. Today, Margaret La Rock in her clothing and textile class from Constable Robin Cameron Education Complex, shared their experience and are planning to give back once again. And so, hearing, you know, and that's, that's just one group of, of citizens that are doing great work within our city. I, I, you know, I can't name everybody, but I, I want to name a few. Kevin and Vanessa Joseph, I know they, they've been highlighted and they do, uh, go to their way on Christmas Day and in Christmas season to help individuals. There's a lot of groups within Prince Albert that are giving out warm clothing, uh, hot meals in a day. So the most, the most, as much as you can do, you know, I encourage residents to do that, to be kind to each other over the season here. And I guess we're going to have a chance to say Merry Christmas to everybody, so I'll hold off on that. But that's kind of my message I wanted to say today.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to move on now to inquiries. Oh, yes, I did. Oh, yes, I did. Sorry. Do you got the video? You got the video? Oh, I do. I had a presentation. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm just so excited. It's Christmas time. Uh, we would just like to show you a, a video that, um, I'll actually be showing on, on Tuesday. But, uh, you get the prelim of the video. Yes, and it's our intention to do these on a, on a regular basis. And they'll be shown, uh, of course, on our website, but they're also, uh, first Tuesday every month will be shown on CTV. Uh, both, uh, locally and provincially as our project goes along because it's excited quite a few people. And so I want to thank Collette and her department for putting it together because it, especially with the circles, you know, to explain, you know, the wave pool because you're all trying to figure out where it fits. So, uh, thank you for that. Okay, inquiry, oh, inquiries. That's where we work. Sorry. Counsel Zarokowski.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you for sharing that with the public. I think that's important information. People don't always know where to find it, how to get it, and it's there on the website. Watch over and over again. Query, if I may, uh, recently the, um, opportunities for public swimming opened up. For lane swimming, sorry, for lessons, for lessons for the, for the young families. And I took a couple of phone calls from, um, a couple of parents, um, young kids who couldn't get in. And tried to explain to them, as best I could, um, some of the issues that we're challenged with here in the city about, um, having space for all of our young kids to participate in swimming lessons. I wonder if the Director could speak to about, um, um, what has caused those challenges over, over the last couple of years? What's changed for us, uh, internally? And, and what hope can we offer our residents, our young families in the next two to three years? And so far as specifically about being able to register their kids for swimming lessons? Whether those opportunities be opened up or are we going to be able, have to continue restricting the, the spaces available? Maybe some perspective about those opportunities and how we got here.
Go ahead. Director, give me your services.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Dion. To Counsel Zarokowski's inquiry. Um, yeah, certainly the demand is, is by far, um, exceeding what we have for availability. So certainly, the department is well aware of those challenges that we have currently with, with that availability. Now, how, how we got here, um, we currently are in a joint use agreement, which is a very positive partnership with the Saskover School Division for Frank Dunpool. Under that agreement, however, we are, uh, a, a partner. So we don't have 100% access to, um, the time. So our time is limited to, uh, weeknights and weekends. That is for all programming, not just swimming lessons, but for, uh, general admission, for other aquacize programming, for an example. And for, uh, the agreements we have with, uh, the Sharks Swim Club and the Pikes. So to fit that all in, we certainly run into those restrictions for, for the time. So, um, the summer does provide us with the opportunity at the water park. Where we do, are 100% owners, we can provide more availability, but in a reduced length of time or duration of time, meaning we only run the Kins and Water Park for 80 days is the operation. So balance between both of those that we control, that, uh, that have some control in the Frank Dunpool and the Kins and Water Park, that would be my summary of the challenges that we have in a reduced period of time, both in duration and, and timeframe. Moving forward, uh, as, and as you've seen, we're, we're certainly under construction, which is very exciting for the new aquatics facility, which is a component of this new facility. Under that operating model that we're going to be bringing you in the new year, uh, you're going to see 100% access because we are going to be the 100% owner. With that, we're going to be able to provide not just limited timeframe such as evenings and, and weekends, but we're going to gain weekday opportunities, which I think is going to speak very well to young families. Parents that want to bring their children on a, on a weekday, which we're restricted to now, is really going to open up that opportunity. We're just speaking specifically swimming lessons here. Um, I can certainly talk about, the programming is very exciting that we're going to be bringing to you in the new year. However, that opportunity that opens up is, is going to really elevate the availability. And it's going to be exciting in terms of the other programming we're going to bring. It's going to be exciting for the events we can host. And it's going to be exciting on the program development that we can really, really bring, uh, to the community. So thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome. Counsel Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Dion. I got a phone call from a resident on, um, MacArthur Drive. She lives right across the street from, uh, Westview School. You might remember her, Mayor Dion, Mrs. Arcand. And, uh, she has, uh, received a letter from the city stating that, um, the residence, um, residential parking across the street from the school is only going to be, um, okayed from nine in the morning till five in the evening. So she is wondering, um, and they were told like years ago when they got it, it was in effect for 24 hours, like every day. So, and she has letters saying this, so, um, I, I found that really interesting because like, I, and I don't know if, if they had a problem, if they would call the police after five, or how would that work for them? Do you know? And if you don't have an answer today, that's good. I'll just fill out the paperwork and that'll be fine.
Good, if you don't mind, please.
And also, uh, I do have another concern for residents on, uh, Carlton Suite Park. Carlton Park Suites at, uh, 1225 28th Street, uh, East. So it's apartment A, B, and C. And like, I'm not too sure, um, where the fire department is called to every time. But, uh, there's quite a few times that I've been in, uh, that residence. And, uh, my mother lives there. And so I do know that the fire alarms are pulled and maliciously, they call it. And, uh, I looked on the fire, uh, website on the Facebook page. And for the last month, the fire department has been there over for 20 calls there. Like, and this is morning, noon and night. Uh, 1:30 in the morning, sometimes, sometimes 3 o'clock. And I'm very concerned for the residents that live there, you know, not just my mom, but there's small children and families that live in there. And the concern is, is the landlord, uh, fixes the locks, the locks get broken. And people who don't live there are in the hallways. And so this is what's happening and it's, it's very concerning because when the alarms are pulled, the residents don't leave. They don't leave their apartments. And sooner or later, something not well is going to happen there. The hallways are dirty. They're filled with garbage. I, I don't know where they get the garbage from, but one day they're clean, the next day they're dirty. And I mean filthy, like. So, um, it's a very concerning situation that's happening up there. And, um, the residents there are very concerned about the situation. The people that, um, you know, like, under, they're understanding that they're homeless people and they're understanding that they need somewhere to warm up and everything like that. But when you start doing things when it's starting to affect residents, when they're sleeping in the middle of the night and waking up to fire alarms, there's a concern there. And, um,
So, we will look into it and get a report back to both you and Counselor Edwards, so that you know. Thank you. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. Just to pick up where Counselor Miller is on the Carlton Park Suites, I did have a conversation with Widener, Widener, I don't know what their business is called, but basically, they said that they'll fix the locks, and then some people in the buildings will let others in, and then those people that get let in wreck the locks so they can come freely. So, often the locks are fixed and they're continuing to be broken. They do have some security, but limited, according to what they said today was, they are limited on it. But I am concerned too, especially when you pull the fire alarm and people don't leave because they're scared to go into the hallway for some of the people that are there. That's frightening, and it certainly needs to be addressed, and we need to do everything possible to keep these people safe, and they're not right now. It's unfortunate, the apartment buildings, it has garbage around in the areas, on the grass, on the snow, outside of the garbage bins, they're always overflowing, and it's really an eyesort of the community, and that's an issue too. I did let them know that directly today, that that's a problem. I do know that they have changed managers very recently, so hopefully that does help. But, in the end, when people are scared to make phone calls and they're scared to come out, if there's a fire, that's a big issue in our community, so hopefully we can address that. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll make sure that you all get a copy of the report. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, worship. So, hearing some of the comments, I too should put it in a inquiry. As you know, there's been multiple, it's more for a policing matter, so I know this council doesn't oversee the policing board, but there is members of the police commissioner board in this room. So, you know, again, and I raise it because I just got a text message again saying that my window got smashed again. So this last week, we've gotten multiple, I don't even know how many blocks, and long blocks, and midtown and surrounding areas, and again, today, I know I've called the police almost nightly to say, could you do more patrolling in our neighborhoods? And so, you know, I guess the inquiry is, what is the police doing to ensure the safety of the property and residents in Ward Three?
Okay, thank you, and you'll turn in your paperwork? Okay, any other inquiries? Nope, I'm going to move then to require, number 15, inquiry responses. Counselor Edwards.
Thank you, your worship. I do, I want to just make a note of the response.
You're going to move the motion, I got to get a motion or any second.
Oh, sorry, yes, yes, I will, I will move.
And you'll second it, Counselor Button? Thank you, move, and second. Thank you, go ahead, Counselor Edwards.
Great, thank you. I did have an inquiry last meeting, inquiry number 22-31, and I just wanted to touch base, I really appreciate the response and the detail of the response. And one of the questions was, what was included in the city of Prince Albert land purchased for the new aquatics in Twin Patterina? And the response, because I know a lot of people don't read the agenda, I'm going to spell it out a little bit to some people, is, in total, the city purchased 25 acres of land at an average cost of $362,500 per acre. That included in the land purchase, the city received land with the following services: lot, cleared, graded, and clean, fill brought in, ready to build on, city water service, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and service tie-ins, road construction, sidewalks, curbs, and lighting, relocation of power line previously running through property, widening of Highway Three and Marquess Road adjacent to the site, two fully lit intersections leading into property, two additional right-in, right-out intersections leading into the property, Sask Energy, Sask Power, and Shaw Cable leading to site. Approximately $1 million in development levy fees will be returned to the city over the next three years. Additional $45,000 per acre, per additional acre developed in the Yar district will be returned to the city. I won't read it all, but I will say, one of them was, what was included in the rural municipality of Prince Albert purchase of land that's being compared to? The response was, after speaking with both the original owner of the land and the RM of Prince Albert Administration, they have confirmed that their land purchase was for raw agricultural land only. Any additional work or services such as grading, site development, site prep, services, et cetera, comes at a significant cost to the RM, which is above and beyond the initial purchase price. This land was also zoned for agriculture use at the time of purchase. And I just wanted to make sure that was read out loud. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, I'll prompt the question. Prompt the question. Inquiry responses. Okay, questions now open. Carried. Okay, notice of motions? Motions, we have none. Public forum, we have none. Okay, before we adjourn, I forgot where, we'll start at Counselor Miller, if you don't mind, and we'll go around the room, ending with me. This is your chance to talk to your residents in the city of PA about your best wishes, as this is our last meeting for the year. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dion. I'd like to wish a Merry Christmas to everybody in the city of Prince Albert, and a Happy New Year, and also, it's a special day for one of my granddaughters, it's her third birthday, so happy birthday, Estelle, have a great evening. I'm sure you're probably just about in bed.
Counselor Z.
Merry Christmas and happy holidays all across our beautiful city, and I was hoping during my holiday moment, I wanted to thank Counselor Miller and other counselors as well, but Counselor Miller for steerheading the handbags for the vulnerable in our city. It's a labor of love, and she puts a lot of effort into it, and I really appreciate getting to assist with that, but she really is the steerhead here. And what it is, is really collecting donations in our city from all different sources and ways, used tuques and mittens and new stuff from stores, and gathering it all together, and then packaging these bags, and then members of city council go out and actually deliver them to the different shelters and centers in our city that really need them and that people appreciate them. So, thank you to Counselor Miller for that. Also, on the theme of holiday, I was hoping to mention that this Saturday, myself and the Historical Society are hosting a holiday walking downtown tour, and it's different than the usual food tour. We're going to look at different retail stores and talk about the history of our retail stores, history of what type of toys children bought in the good old days, and if people are interested, you can buy tickets at the PA Historical Center, yeah, PA Historical Society. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. I just want to, yeah, wish everybody, you know, health and safe Christmas season, so very Merry Christmas to everybody in Prince Albert, especially to my Ward Three residents, of course, and happy seasons, happy holidays to those who can, so, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to all of you, the administration and all my fellow counselors, and it's just great to be with all of you at a festive season like this, and certainly, a Merry Christmas and a great Happy New Year to Ward Three and all of the citizens of the city of Prince Albert. This is the time of year, every year you can, you can, Ward Four. Am I looking after your word again? No, no, I'm not, you do a good job. Ward Four, I'm sorry, but, and this is the time of year when, if you find somebody that needs a helping hand, please give them one. After all, we here in this room are all very fortunate, we have all good health, we have got good limbs, and we've got good backs, and we can do a little work, so if you have a person out there that needs a helping hand, please do so. Again, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year to everybody.
Counselor Button.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to wish all residents of the city of Prince Albert and area Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I also want to just remind residents that this year, it'll be the first Christmas for 31 families in Canada from Ukraine, people that are fleeing an attack on their country, and so, just be extra kind to these young families and families that are here, and pray for peace, hopefully for that particular country. And speaking of peace, it's just, it is a time, Christmas is a time for peace on earth, and so I hope, over the next couple of weeks, we could put aside our differences and our dislike of one another, and just act in a more happy and peaceful manner, whether it be in person or on social media, and I hope people can just be kinder to one another, at least for the Christmas season, and then the 12 days of Christmas which follow Christmas Day, that we can be peaceful to one another. So, once again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to the residents of Prince Albert, and my Ward Four, Five, but to all residents of Prince Albert. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Dion. Yeah, I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all the residents in Prince Albert, echoing everybody in the room, of course, but to administration and the employees of the city and all their families especially, you guys put long, countless hours in to make our city great, and we sure appreciate it, and certainly wish you a Merry Christmas. All my colleagues around here on council, it's great to work with all of you, and we have some differences, but that's okay, we move forward, and then that, again, it's been mentioned earlier, but I appreciate this council for that reason. So I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and it's great working with all of you. Of course, to Ward Six Carlton Park and Crescent Acres, everybody who's watching, very Merry Christmas as well, Happy New Year, be safe, everybody, and safe travels. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm not as articulate as people standing up, so I have written a few notes, but I am standing up, thank you.
Anyway, Merry Christmas to all the residents in the city, especially those in Southwood
and East Hill, who I am proudly proud to represent. I want to thank all of our community members, we have an amazing community who continually perform acts of kindness. If we focus on the negativity, we forget to look over on this other side, which is thousands of people who are generous, add sparkle always to our lives, clean their sidewalks so seniors and kids can, you know, get out and walk in the winter. So, thank you to all of those who shop local and just make our city the great place that it is, we are so fortunate to live in this wonderful place. Special thank you to city admin, the crews, the police, and the fire, and their families. Their families allow them to spend so much extra time doing what it takes to make our city so wonderful and safe and growing. We're all a work in progress, we have to remember to give people space and grace, and our community is a community where everyone can thrive. So Merry Christmas, everyone, enjoy your holidays.
That's very good. Thank you, your worship, for this opportunity. I'd like to wish all the residents of West Hill and the city of Prince Albert a very happy Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous new year coming up. We do have some problems in our community, but we also have opportunities, and what I love about being in this room is the quality of the people. Both the elected and senior administration work so hard on behalf of our residents, and second to none, frankly, and I hear stories from our colleagues who are elected in Saskatoon and Regina, who have issues of access in their senior administration team, and we don't have that here. And so, when I reflect on being thankful, that's one thing I reflect on, is being thankful for our team that is willing every day to serve the people out there. They put a lot of time in and don't get the thanks that they deserve, and so I wanted to say that. Also, our employees are going to be out there looking after our city, looking after our residents, taking time away from their families so that they can do the work that we ask them to do. I wanted to wish them a happy and safe Christmas holiday season as well. So, if I may, I also wanted to wish a happy, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to the media that's here, thank you, sticks it out with us every Monday, and more than Monday. I think the feeling of community grows in this room, and it grows out in our community, as my colleague to my right said so well, there are so many positive things going out there. Let's take a moment when we have time over the break to look after one another, check in on our neighbor, there may be a reason why the sidewalk isn't shoveled, let's take a plate of food over to the senior that lives down the street. So, Merry Christmas to each one of you, Merry Christmas to our residents, to our seniors, and all the volunteers that make the city work.
Thank you. So I'm going to do just a little bit of a little different approach because we've all pretty well wished everything. What I want to talk about is Christmas, the time of giving. We have the Salvation Army out there with their kettles, it's important that we give, they use that money to feed the hungry, and that's one of their biggest fundraisers of the year. We have their Optimus Club, as you can see out there with their barns, collecting gifts for young people. We have the Christmas Day Dinner people, we want to thank them. And then when it comes to Christmas Day, we want to thank, you know, we're all at home, but the police are there, the fire's there, the hospital's there, there's all essential workers that are out there, so even, I want to wish them a Merry Christmas, but I also want to say thank you, because lots of them volunteer, so other people in their organizations that have family can stay at home, so we do appreciate that, and it does not go unnoticed. But, I just also want to touch on Counselor Miller's purse program and backpack. It's probably, for me, one of the best team building things council does. Last year, I remember being at Union Center with Dawn, with Tony, with Tara, and Counselor Miller, and we just, the five of us just had a blast, and I learned a few things about clothing items that I didn't know what they were. So, it's an experience, but it shows that even though we bicker, and this is where we bicker, but when we leave, we leave as friends and colleagues, and we all have a passion. Sometimes we bicker because we have a passion for this city, and that's one thing I give this council credit for. We have a passion, we want to do the best we can, we want to give them the best experience they can in a safe community, in a caring community. And our staff, you know, you work for us 365 days a year, and a few times, we do say thank you, but we do appreciate you, and we appreciate everyone that comes to work for our city, because no matter what your job is with the city, it's all important. You know, like, some people think, well, I have a lesser job, no, you're all important. Whether you're sweet in the sidewalk, you're driving the snowplow, you're all important, because those areas have to be done. So with that-
lots of them volunteer so other people in their organizations that have family can stay at home. So we do appreciate that, and it does not go unnoticed. But I just also want to touch on Counselor Miller's purse program and backpack. It's probably, for me, one of the best team building things council does. Last year, I remember being at Union Center with Dawn, with Tony, with Tara and Counselor Miller, and we just, the five of us just had a blast. And I learned a few things about clothing items that I didn't know what they were. So, it's an experience, but it shows that even though we bicker, and this is where we bicker, but when we leave, we leave as friends and colleagues, and we all have a passion. Sometimes we bicker because we have a passion for this city, and that's one thing I give this council credit for. We have a passion, we want to do the best we can, we want to give them the best experience they can in a safe community, in a caring community. And our staff, you know, you work for us 365 days a year, and a few times, we do say thank you, but we do appreciate you. And we appreciate everyone that comes to work for our city, because no matter what your job is with the city, it's all important. You know, like, some people think, well, I have a lesser job. No, you're all important. Whether you're sweet in the sidewalk, you're driving the snowplow, you're all important because those areas have to be done. So with that, I just want to wish everyone in the city of Prince Albert Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Please, don't drink and drive. This is a season that we do like to celebrate, we have all kinds of ways to get home, we have a free bus service, you know, a wingman, we have red nose, we have taxis, we have family. So I just ask, because the biggest gift, and I tell this all the time during graduation, the biggest gift that we can all give our mother at Christmas time is a hug. Not a Christmas card or a gift, they want a hug, they want to see us. So travel safe, because you know Christmas is coming, so we're probably going to get a storm, price of gas is going to go up, you know, we all know what to expect. So, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and be safe, and see you in the new year. And I'll ask Counselor Gilmore to do the final adjournment of this season. Counselor Gilmore?
That's Counselor Lee, now, your.
Thank you, secondary. I know we all want to stay. Counselor Zarikowski, hands, all in favor? I'd like to remind council that you're required in the lounge. Okay, thanks, everybody, enjoy your Christmas.